Okay, right now. Today is April 12th, 2024, and I am Sandra Laffkey Carlson. I'm here at the Twolleton Heritage Center with Mike Lofton, our videographer, and we're doing an oral history interview with Octavio Gonzalez, who is a resident of Twolleton and on our city council. So, thank you, Octavio, for being here, agreeing to...
It's a pleasure. I love history, so this is wonderful.
Oh, good. Thank you. Well, would you start by telling us, maybe, where you were born, where you grew up, who was in your family then?
Okay, so I was born in Tijuana, Mexico, which is Baja California, right on the other side of San Diego. I was supposed to be the first born in the United States, but we didn't quite get here on time. And so I was born in Mexico there. And then I was raised in Corona, California, a small town called El Cerrito there. I was raised there all the way up until I got married when I was 21 to my high school sweetheart, and then we moved to Oregon. We felt that California was, at the time, crowded. Highway 15 had four lanes, one direction, four lanes the other direction, and it was packed constantly. And so now it's probably even worse as they've added more lanes. But we decided to come up here for that reason. We thought we had helped Heidi's mom, my wife's mom, move up here with her. And like, this is actually nice. We like the cooler temperatures. And then a year later, we were here, and now we've been here ever since. So it's been now 20... Kind of was back in 1996, so I think 28 years? If I remember correctly, 28 years?
Yes. Wow. And did you come straight to Twolleton?
No, we... In the beginning, we were trying to find our place. We kind of moved from Beaverton to Portland to Tiger, a couple of different places. I lived in Westland for about 10 years, and then we wanted something a little bit bigger because we were beginning to have children. And then we decided to move here in Twolleton, of course, in Foxhills, but a little close to Westland.
Okay. And so it was the two of you and then children as they came along?
Yes, actually, we... Heidi and I were married for 15 years before we decided to have children. I... We'd come from a very poor background. A migrant family and I think her family also. And so we wanted to make sure we were better prepared, but I think we probably over-prepared. Because we... I think I was 36 and my wife was 36 when we had our first child. And then she was almost 40 to have our second child, which is... They say it's very hard for women to have, but truly, she was already pregnant. I think, don't pull me on this one, but three months, we didn't even know she was pregnant.
Uh-huh. And so how many children?
We have two children, Santos and Helena.
Oh, beautiful. And so they grew up...
They were born here in Twolton, yep, right on... Yep.
And how old are they now?
So Santos is 12 years old, going on 19, and my daughter is nine years old.
Oh. So when you came to... Well, what was your work history or your school experience?
Well, I don't have any formal education. I didn't graduate from college. I took some trade classes in landscaping, practicum, plan ID, soil science, soil chemistries, but I'm more self-taught. I'm avid reader, I'm a fast learner, so no really college degree. My background, when I first came to Oregon, I sold cars for a brief moment, for a brief moment, at Rontonken Chevrolet. Very scary thing to do that, because I've always known the reputation that people who sell cars had at the time. But I was naive. I didn't know any better. I just needed to find ways to make money.
Yeah.
Quickly, I was promoted to go into the finance office, so I became the finance manager for the Rontonken Chevrolet. So I would be the person who would help people get loans when they were credit challenged. I became very good at that. And there, kind of, things changed, where I kind of met a vice president of US Bank. He was buying a car. He came with his own lending guidelines, because he's the vice president of the bank, and here I'm a finance manager that has access to maybe 20 other banks lending. And I said to him, "I think I could do better interest rate than you can get in your own bank." He goes, "Okay, well, let's see what you can do," which I did by a couple of basis points. Short enough, a couple of months later, he just paid it off. You know, but I think more so, he just wanted to spend time talking to me. Because he said, "If you're thinking of making a change, here's my card."
Oh.
And I think about three months later, I gave him a call, and I moved from doing finance and insurance for the dealership to being a personal banker for US Bank, and then from there, working my way up to becoming a manager.
Wow. So... That's... And then how did you... And then from there, did you...
So now, landscaping, so let's back... Let's go back in history a little bit. So when we first came to the United States, my father was in agricultural. He came over through the Barstow program, which is the worker migrant program at the time. And so he only knew how to do field work. And so when we began to work, oh, we needed to help our family, because obviously migrants don't make a lot of money. So as early as we could work, we were doing yard work. We were doing landscaping as a kid.
You did that yourself?
I did with my dad. Yeah, my dad, my brother, my sister, we were all there landscaping. It's kind of... We were trying to just find ways to make money to help support the family. And I remember that at times, my dad would... You know, he'd have his normal job, but he would drop me and my brother off at a house where we had to do a whole cleanup. You know, where when houses get overridden with weeds and everything is big. So my dad would drop us off there in the morning, and then he would go to work, and it would be the all-day work, and then he would pick us up after he was done. Sometimes it would be done with the work, and we would just be outside waiting in front of the house. Kind of uncomfortable, but that's just how it is.
Yeah.
So always that kind of hard work for anything that we could do to make money. I think in California, there was earthquakes at times, so my dad would farm us out to, you know, up Mountain Airhead when chimneys were falling, to go up there and just help take chimneys down and cart the cement, just anything and anything to make money that we were doing.
Uh-huh. So like cleaning up debris from earthquake damage?
So especially in Mount Airhead, Big Bear, Mountain Airhead, I think it's called Airhead. You know, the earthquake would hit, and the chimneys would kind of separate from the house a little bit, but not fully fall off. And there was a lot of work up there, a lot of work, and dangerous work. So my dad would allow our neighbor across the street who was going up there to do that. "Hey, can I take your children to help me?" So there we go, we up doing that, putting weeds, tree work, just anything to work, you know? And so I never wanted to be in landscaping, because I remember how hard that work was. Didn't really have a lot of time to play, always working, working, and working. Fast forward now, and here I am, you know, in landscaping, at the top scale of landscaping. You know? So it's just weird. Went from banking to landscaping all again, so back to the hard work.
Yes, yeah. But you're... Well, you're doing more than just that, though. You're kind of overseeing or coordinating?
Yeah. I never knew landscaping was what it is now, because when I decided to go back into landscaping, I was a bank manager, but I aged so much working in banking. I think I was 20, 25, 26 years old as a very, very young manager of a bank at that time. And I remember how stressful it was dealing with, you know, people would come in with money problems, overdraft accounts, loans. You can see their life right before you, you know? And that's, you know, bank robberies. It's just a highly stressful job, you know, at the time. And so I thought I would try to do something else, but I didn't have any... I only knew finance now, and I knew how to work hard. And so on the weekends, I began to get some side hustle, I guess they call it now. I began to mow some lawns. I started to be managing your bank in the daytime, and then I would mow lawns in the evening, and then eventually on Saturdays and Sundays, fill those days with homes that I would do on my own.
Wow, hardworking.
And then eventually, I got enough clients where I left banking and just had my own landscape company for about nine years, doing the same work I was doing when I was a child, the hard work. But I was everything. I was the designer, I was the estimator, I was the worker. And then eventually, we decided to have children, my wife and I did. So I did not want to have my children in daycare, so I sold my company, and I was a stay-at-home dad for about two years. It was the hardest thing I've ever done, is to be a stay-at-home dad.
In spite of all the other work?
It is, because I've always been super ambitious, have so much energy to do all these things. And here, I couldn't do any of that, so I just lived with my son all day. And that was hard for me, especially when you come from a migrant background. That's all you want to do, is work and succeed and, you know, and make it.
Yeah.
And so I felt those two years were probably the most challenging for me, because I felt like a race car with brakes on, with tires burning, and I just wasn't going anywhere. But it was so valuable that I actually did that. Because, you know, Mexican men don't really stay home to be stay-at-home dad. It's not very common.
Traditional.
Not traditional at all. So I found it to be hard, but I made it work. It's... As, you know, owning your own business is very expensive. You got taxes, payroll taxes, and those kinds of challenges always. Cash flow is always an issue. And you have high overhead costs because of equipment, a lot of equipment up on the front end to just to do the work.
Yeah.
But when I sold the company, I was able to unburden myself from all those things. But I still knew what I had. I still knew how to design landscapes, and how to talk, and how to explain it correctly. And so I kind of made it my own, because when I had my son Santos with me... You know, now you have these backpacks you can carry your kids around, you have slings, you have all these things. And so... But because I was a landscaper and people knew I was a landscaper, I would always get called, "Hey, can you help me with this? Can you help me with this?" And so though I couldn't do the work, but I can definitely coach them how to do it, how to bypass some of these trial and errors of wrong equipment. Sure, I'll do that. So I took my son with me, and there I go. You know, next thing you know, this person referred me to their friend who is looking for a design. "Okay, well, I can do that as a side hustle." So now I was doing design consulting work, but it was just me and my son Santos. And I made more money just in those two years than I had ever done as a physical landscaper doing the work.
Just doing the consulting?
Doing the consulting, because there was really no overhead. The owner overhead was me. And if you knew how to get a graph paper and design the landscape and give somebody a rendered... They're like, "Well, can you help me build this?" And then, so at that time, I partnered with a construction company. I said, "Look, I have a client who wants to build this, but I don't do that work anymore. But here's this design they want. Can you build it?" So next thing you know, I'm providing them a bid with this contractor's price to the client. And I would be in the kitchen table there with my son Santos right there and me. And I think I sold so much work because, probably because my son was with me all the time, and he was so well-behaved. And it was quite unusual to have a dad bring his two-year-old, three-year-old son with him everywhere. But that's how it happened, and for two, two and a half years.
So Santos was... He was learning all this?
He knows, and now that he's... Even right now, on his 12-years-of-age, he knows how to do a lot of things. He knows, very handy, and yeah. So that was... And now, then... So that's what we did for those two years. And then my wife got pregnant again, and it's difficult to take two kids doing this thing. So I ended up not consulting anymore, but ended up working for a larger landscape company. So now I jumped back into commercial landscaping. But I went to... It was a lateral move. I didn't have to start at the bottom, mowing lawns or doing like that. I just started as an account manager, because I already knew landscaping. I knew the cost of landscaping. I knew how to render designs. So got hired onto a company that eventually landed the... So I was managing, with this company, I was managing commercial accounts, like, you know, like cabela's or, you know, like the type of office buildings, HOAs, apartment complexes, so everything at once. And so I had about 72 accounts at the time. And I first went from being me and my son Santos back into the workforce. But I did really good. I kind of made a name for myself as being a good person that I was doing. And then eventually, this company... I didn't work for that company, but this company ended up landing half of the Nike contract, which is Nike's on the world scale.
Yes.
And so I was the account manager that oversaw that half of the Nike facility, which you could just imagine how much pressure that is. And to make sure that landscaping needs to look perfect, 365 days a year, all the time. So I was doing that for about four years, and also managing the other accounts, the apartments, the commercial accounts, the HOAs, all at once. And I really liked it. It was just a lot of fun. I mean, I still can't believe I get paid to do what I do now, because I'm truly outside walking on landscaping, looking for subtleties. You know, twitching the leaf, a certain hue, a certain wilt, a certain soil. You know, those are the signs that we landscapers look for before they become big problems. Kind of like being a doctor. You know, when a doctor says to you, "Hey, what does that look like?" Well, for us landscapers at our level, it's about the eye. It's... We know the signs, you know, when a leaf is a little bit wilted. So I really enjoyed it so much. But again, it was at a different level than when I was doing landscaping as a child in my own business.
Yeah. So you have to go and inspect?
Yes.
And maybe diagnose?
Yes.
Analyze?
Absolutely. When you're a landscaper, you know, the old-fashioned way is you go over there, you break the branch, smell it, or you see how it lasted. Those are the physical attributes of touching and knowing what's wrong with the plant. But there's so many things in nature that talk to you without even doing that. You can just see it in front of you. "Oh, that has this, that has that." So to be on top of your game and to be ahead of landscaping, because you're dealing with live organisms that truly, if you don't catch it, it takes about almost 60 days to 90 days to get something to come back. And so you want to prevent that from happening, especially when you're being paid as a landscaper to make sure that that does not happen. Especially when you have huge capital investments in landscaping. I mean, commercial apartments, property managers, community managers. If it goes... If all of a sudden, you have a whole street that all the grass died or all the plants are dead, why? You need to catch that before it gets to that point. So that requires a lot of training, a lot of passion. And so now, so walking your communities, getting in there, looking around, you know, you can catch things before they become a problem, and then you can remedy them, put the solutions, and then keep those plants alive. And that's when you see a community that we see around here. It doesn't happen by itself. There's a person like me behind the scenes doing that. And then you have the team who does the actual work as well. But it does require that kind of expertise before things come crashing down. It is very expensive to replace landscape, to have an appeal, to keep property values up, to keep that investment for that investor, that commercial property interested, and on and on. So it's a big deal.
And so you have clients now in Twolleton?
So when I was on council, when I won my candidacy as council, I quickly eliminated all the accounts that I... Not for me, but they were transferred over to somebody else. Just wanted to make sure we were being responsible and prudent with the kind of influence that a council can have on local communities. So quickly, we transferred those accounts to somebody else, and I stayed managing a little bit of the west side more, outside of Twolton, Beaverton, Tiger, King City, those areas out there.
Okay.
Yeah.
You must be on the road a lot in those council meetings?
Yes, a lot of... Luckily, everything was local, but now in my new role, I get to go out to Vancouver, Richfield, Washington, or Woodburn, or... But those are planned events, so I can probably see communities in one day, go out, "Okay, that's what I'll do for today," meet with the board, walk the community, see what they're looking for.
Okay. Before I ask you about your city council work, I want to go back, if that's okay?
Yes.
Just to your childhood, because you were talking earlier about what you and maybe your siblings, your cousins, your friends did growing up. What you... How you spent your time?
It's... So obviously, there was 17 siblings in my household with six adults, which is, you know, as a migrant family and people, we were illegal at the time. My father was not, because he came through the program. My uncle was. The uncles, I guess the men were not illegal. But all the family was, my mom, my aunts, and all of us who were born in Mexico were not legal. And so it was always hard to just, even though we did get a chance to play and be with friends in our local community, but we were all in the same place. You know, everybody was in our neighborhood, illegal at one time. And so my mom was always very guarded with us.
Oh, yeah.
Because if the immigration... I guess I have to talk about that. That's very important, because it defines a lot of us, you know? I became a citizen very late. I could have become a citizen much earlier. But because even in my advanced age and what I know, you still don't know about immigration and how it works, and you're afraid that...
And it can change.
It can change. It can be taken away from you, you know? And so you never even want to show up to those offices. If you're legal now and you have a green card, let's just keep that going.
Yeah.
But back when I was a child, you know, back in the 1975... I was born in 1973, so when I was five, six, so around 1979, 1980s, the immigration back then was not what it is now. You know, back then, they would close off streets. The immigration would come in, close off one end of the street, close off the other end of the street, and they would go door-to-door. They'd keep the doors open, and they would pull people out of their houses and cuff them and put them in the van. And you're in Mexico within a week, you know? That's how it was back then, nothing like it is now. And so my mom always had those fears of us. And I remember a story that we were... I believe I was in fifth grade, and I talked about this when I ran for school board in local, I didn't win that election. But I remember that the schools, this was 19... We can talk about it differently. I think it was 1980, in El Cerrito, my elementary school, where, you know, the immigration was across the street, off school property. And as soon as we crossed that street, the immigration was going to pick up all those kids. Literally, you cross the street, and everybody gets ushered over to here. And next thing you know, the immigration is, you know, checking on the kids, who they are, and even taking them away.
The kids?
The kids as well.
Without parents?
Without parents. And that would happen. That would happen. Our father had always prepared us for all that, all the time. If it was to happen, what we would have to do. And so... But I remember that the immigration was there, waiting. You can see green everywhere across the street. And I remember the janitor, but at the time, it was like the security guard for the school in California. I remember him yelling at us. I think I was here, he was here, and we were way over there, like almost, you know, a half a block, where he was yelling at us, "Kids, come on back." You know, because he was trying to make sure that we did not cross that street.
Yeah.
As soon as we crossed that street, we were going to be hooked, and we were going to be gone and on a plane and dropped off in Mexico. And that's how it was. That's how it was. And so my parents lived in fear for a long time, you know? We eventually became legal. We were the first to become legal when Ronald Reagan passed the amnesty law in 1987. And because my father was already part of the worker program, we were the first in line, you know, to become legal. But to become legal then, it's different now. You know, of course, they check you for diseases. They want to make sure you were proficient in English. My father always made sure that we spoke proper English and spoke well. And because at times, just speaking proper English, they would never know you were illegal. And so many of us lived under that shadow, make sure we spoke proper, spoke well. I think we've achieved that, but those were challenging times, you know?
Yeah.
So all of us lived through that, you know? We couldn't go back to Mexico. Never met my grandparents for that reason. Both my parents, grandparents, died before we even met them, because we couldn't go back to see them. And that's just... Those were just the realities of being an immigrant when you come to the United States.
And do you know why your parents chose to come?
Of course. I think it's...
To leave family?
Yes. I think about it now, even when Heidi and I talk about, "Maybe we should leave Oregon, you know, move out of Oregon." I think about the roots that we established, how hard that would be to live, to leave a place where you're known, and you know your friends and your kids and your community, just start over. I could just imagine that. When my parents left Mexico, they were not... They knew that they were not going to come back, you know? Never kind of coming back. This is it. And it was probably much easier for my dad, because my dad's parents both died when he was six years old. And so he had raised himself with a family of 12. And so my mom married with my dad at a very young age, back then in Mexico. She was, I think it was normal to be married by 12. If you were not married by 12, you were a has-been. It's amazing. You know, because the lifespan is so short in Mexico. I mean, people lived a very poor life. I mean, my mom slept on the floor, you know, on dirt fields, you know, along the train tracks with her parents, and that was her life. So to be married, it's almost an upgrade, you know? But she never... But we never saw my grandparents on my mom's side, because we couldn't go back. We were not legal. And when we finally got our green card, it was just too late. It was too late. So those fears were always there when we were kids.
Yeah.
But we played soccer. I think in our own house, we had our own soccer team, because there was so many of us. And those were things I do remember, but always working. Going to the public swimming pool was always super fun. And a lot of hide-and-seek with our community, those things. But again, the whole community, we were all in it together. We were all in the same spot.
Yeah.
And it's funny, when I was in elementary school, junior high school, no one ever knew that I was illegal. No one knew.
Yeah.
It was one of just things that you just didn't talk about. And even then, it would probably... I thought it was an embarrassing thing, you know, because we've learned to speak English. We got so assimilated to hear, and we knew what that would be. So finally, when I got my green card, when I was 15 years old, I swear, I thought, "Oh, like a rocket ship, like all is now possible." And I got my green card, and I didn't have to do the hard labor work anymore, you know, at all.
Tell us, what does a green card mean? What does it enable you to do?
I'll give you one example. So my father, in trying to make money, you know, worked in the field, you know, got a smart job pumping sewers, you know, septic tanks in California. And the septic tank, when they get pumped, they have to be pumped out, and then somebody has to go down there and rake the bottom of that septic tank to open up the leak's line so that the water can go. Well, my father didn't fit in that square, but I did, you know? And so, you know, there you go. You get lower down into that septic tank at a, you know, I think it was nine... I remember, I was very young. You know, and my dad said, "Hey, when you get down there, you're going to throw up instantly." Just, he would say, "Mijo, just wipe it off and just get down there and do it." So there I go. And sure enough, as soon as I got dark under there, and you started raking that stuff out, I think I threw up so much, you know? You know, but my dad just said, "Just wipe your mouth and just keep on doing it." You know, a half hour later, you come up, and I didn't have to do this kind of work anymore. You know, I don't have to do that anymore. So having a green card means that you can get a normal job, a normal job. And so I got a job at Carl's Jr., you know, making hamburgers. And I worked probably 60 hours, didn't have to, because you're in school, you can't work that many hours. But, you know, got that job, and then it was on. Then you could now do anything. You can go to college, you can get any job, you could just apply for it. I mean, there's no more doing this hard labor work anymore.
Yeah.
So it's... The whole world just opened.
Wow. So you've come a long way from cleaning sewers, and now you're on the city council here in Twolton.
Yes.
And what compelled you to run for city council? You ran in another election?
I did.
For the school board?
I ran for the Tiger Twolton School Board. And I think it was 2001, right in the middle of COVID. I didn't win that election. I was... That was a hard election. That was my first time ever doing anything like this, you know? I'm not even a college grad. With my story, I never thought I could ever even be on the school board, especially when you have only school graduates, teachers, principals, you know, in those roles, which I don't agree with. I think you've got to have people who are not deeply involved in the schools to make these hard decisions, as you're seeing now, you know? But I didn't win that election. I am an independent. I had endorsements from both Republicans and Democrats on both sides, people from the school board, and I didn't win. And we poured our heart into it. Let me tell you, we did so much, and it was a heartbreak, it was not win. But I learned a lot in that lesson. What I learned is that people want to know where you stand. And sometimes being in the middle, people don't know. You're kind of wishy-washy. You're over here, you're over there. Even though I'm an independent, I feel both sides. I agree with them. I agree with this person over here. So that was a lesson I learned. And so when I ran for city council, I took no endorsements. So that was a lesson I learned. And so when I ran for city council, I took no endorsements, none. Just did it the old-fashioned way, my wife and kids, just went door to door. We knocked on doors. I didn't have to worry what I needed to say to offend this person that I do agree with, but not everything, or this person over here, no. Now I speak my truth, which I, I've always had. But that was a lesson that I learned, is that when you speak your truth, people get behind you. They really do. Doesn't matter what side you're on. And I won. It was a really tight election. I'll tell you, really tight. We didn't know, almost two weeks later, every update would come in. I think I won by a hundred and fifty-seven votes. And I know that people did not want me to win. I know it, because of the stance I took with the schools. And all that was going on with COVID and all the social policies that, that are before us now, that are hard to. I ran because of this. I ran because. My father had always wanted us to learn English. My father had always felt that Americans have always been so kind to us, always. When we were kids and being as poor as we were, there was always an American person helping us, all the time, always. And so when fast forward to now and they're saying that. That Americans, white people are racist, that was very hard for me to even accept. And I knew that so many of us in the minority communities don't feel that way at all. And I wanted to make sure that I at least get that chance to talk about that. No, I don't agree with you. I don't agree with you. That is not true. Sure, there is racism out there. There's always is racism in other countries against other people. But you come to America because we are a melting pot. There's differences. We've had bad history. But for the most part, not the way it's being presented. And I wanted to make sure that I got on this council to speak the truth about that, because truly. It's hard to call me a racist with my background and my history, but I have to be able to talk about it directly to people. And I'm challenged now. People do challenge me, but how can they challenge me when I am the product of this country? And that's why I ran, is to set the record straight. There is racism out there. Sure, we are different people. But not the way it's being painted now. America has been amazing to me, to many immigrants. And that's why I ran. You know, and plus I have a good work experience and I'm hardworking and in council, you need that fortitude, you know, instead of fast.
What is your greatest challenge? What do you see as the city councils?
That I'm, I am one voice, in my opinions. That is the hardest part. You know, I've been disenchanted in some of the recent, uh, votes that we've had to pass directly, specifically around. DEI, the Idea Committee. And I find that to be more of a political incubator system that will probably. Hurt us as those initiatives are being canceled nationally wide. They came out strong. Everybody got a DEI person in their company. Two years later, they're not there anymore. Because they learned that it's divisive. It's divisive to be inclusive, but to be inclusive, you gotta exclude one culture, and that is a white culture. And that is, to me, racist. So that, to me, is probably the most difficult part, is dealing with social policy.
Okay. What, what about, um, Tuolatin as a community, um. I know there are a lot of challenges. It's, it's a very busy community right on the freeway and, uh. And a lot of different people here and what, what do you see as maybe one of the challenges in future for Tuolatin?
I think it's the same challenge that a lot of cities face. It's growth and how to manage growth, controlled growth. Tuolatin has done an awesome job. Our city manager, Carolyn. The financial responsibility of this city has held the line, held the line and, and not going below our, our, our budgets. Keep keeping a, a reserve in place to fund when there's certain gaps. Not being too aggressive on allowing development to come in when there isn't infrastructure to support it. And infrastructure isn't just pipes and it's staff. It's, it's the Parks Department, it's the maintenance team, you know, the guys out there doing that work to keep the city looking the way it looks. And so that's probably the most challenging. The other one is traffic. But traffic is a losing battle, because truly we do it to ourselves, the, the. I'll give you an example. So in California, right? Though as packed as they are, when they build a road, they build it wide and large. It may not get used for ten, twenty years, but it is there. And, and they build around those. Here, we put the houses in, we put the businesses, and then we build the roads. Which is very opposite. So people complain about traffic, but I, I hate to be insensitive about that, but. You did it to yourself. You've chose to plan in that way and not fund it correctly. So traffic is gonna always be there. Trying to get public transportation, try and edit all these buses. Sure, but we don't really have a downtown corridor here in Tuolatin. This is the, co- close to the Heritage Center, the library, is it. But if you have a, we have a max line there that drops out people, but then they still have to walk five blocks or ten blocks to get to their houses. It isn't like downtown, you can just get off your bus or try it, one block in, you're in your building. We don't have that here. You almost have to eliminate every road and just put trains everywhere, which is not gonna happen. So I think the biggest challenge is growth. And managing growth responsibly.
Okay. What do you see for the future for yourself and your family, your children?
Wow. Definitely been, I definitely. There's definitely a lot of opportunity before me to continue on my political path. But I'm not long for a political path. At all. I, I never set out to be in this role at all. I just knew that. It was time because of what was happening with the social policies and the unrest that happened in our community with, um. With all this race stuff happening. You know, many of us who ran for office didn't get in the first time. Many of us ran the second time and more of us got in, more minorities got in. And you'll find when you talk to minorities, they feel as I feel, that this is a great place to live. There's nowhere in the world that everybody is trying to break into this country to get here other than America, you know, so. I don't know. I don't know. I have two and a half years to go. Two, three and a half, yeah, two and a half years to go. I know that the, the stance I take are not popular at times, which is fine. I am not making my decisions with the future in any future political, I'm just doing the people's work. And at times it's hard. You wanna help everybody, but you can't help everybody. You have to take control of your own life and the, the, the. The steps are there. Sorry, I stutter, my English stutter a little bit. Like immigrants, when they come here, everything is right before you. So it's up for you to get it and get to work. Okay, and, and work hard. So that's why you can't help everybody. Government cannot help everybody. They can put. Find libraries to get self-educated, donate money to scholarships, to be able to help yourself. You can qualify, but at the end of the day, you have to take action. You gotta step, step up and do the work. That's what's hard. You know, I am reminded, um. When I took some trade college classes. When I first sold my company and I was a stay-home dad, I decided to go to school and take some landscaping classes. You know, the, the. Practical, the soil sciences, you know. I have, I didn't get my degree, but I, I learned a lot. But I remember that I applied for a grant to pay for my schooling there. And I got a small one for five hundred dollars and then the agriculture department said, hey, well, you can probably just work at the college. And we'll pay for your term while you're working. So I, okay, so I worked at the college, at Clackamas Community College, in the landscaping department. Cleaned up the college, doing all the various things there and reporting to the maintenance department and they paid for my class. But in talking to the manager there, she says, there is. A lot of grants that never get used, that are free. Millions and millions of grants out there. The only difference is that there's accountability in these grants. Because of the accountability factor, they never get used. But then you go to federal student loans that never has enough money, always runs out of money. And they're always looking for more money to get federal loans, student loans, with no accountability. And that's, I, that's just an irony to me, when you have all this free money out there. What kind of accountabilities you gotta have that they ask for? Maybe you gotta write a report on what this grant meant to you. Maybe you gotta go volunteer at some community garden. Maybe you gotta mentor a high school kid. These accountabilities are so minor. But no one takes up on it. And that money is there for free to be had for everybody. What does that say? So. There is a lot of opportunity in this country to do whatever you wanna do, but you have to just take action. If I can leave anything, that would be probably what I would say.
Okay, okay. I can't think of any other questions to ask. Is there anything else that you want to say?
See, I would say that my story is probably the story of this country. That a lot of immigrants who come here feel the way I feel. There's so much opportunity here. And it's up to you to just go and get it, you know. And that's why everybody's trying to come here. You know, and we have to try to protect this thing called America, that it is up to you. It isn't up to any one person. So I ran for city council to try to at least put that voice out there and. We'll see. Doing the people's work is hard. But at the end of the day, if you're a principal and you believe in what you do, just do the right thing, cause it will be hard and it, it gets hard sometimes.
Well, you're, you're an amazing example of hard work.
Thank you. I do wanna say that I have my wife, who has been just a phenomenal support. I met my wife Heidi in sixth grade. And, uh, you know, we've been through a lot of challenges, but you know, it's been just amazing to have a, a support. Like my wife, I don't think, uh, you can do it alone. And so I'm just happy to have her in my corner and it's probably the most amazing thing.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you so much, Taffio.
Yeah. Well, I hope I wasn't too long-winded for you guys, but there's just a lot going on, a lot to happen.
No, yes, yeah. It's all worthwhile, worthwhile to hear.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you very much.